Alrighty, it is six o'clock Benton City time, so we will start the Planning Commission meeting for Benton City and tonight we are having a public hearing tonight on the I-82 sub. Okay, first we'll start with roll call, please.
Commissioner McLeod.
Here.
Commissioner Burton.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Here.
Commissioner Lynn.
Here.
Alright, and with that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is standing in one nation, unregretted, invincible, with liberty and the best of all. And I did not receive meeting minutes, so I don't have any comments.
Did you hear that, Margaret? We didn't receive minutes for the last meeting.
It went in late.
So, do we want to just skip that part?
Can we move to have those approved at the next meeting?
Yes.
Alrighty, so motion by Jeanie, can I hear a second?
I second it.
Got to have verbal eyes, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we'll move to the reason we're here tonight. So we were having a public hearing tonight on a proposed plan for the I-82 South Plan, which is basically south of the freeway, and the reason we have this meeting is so that as commissioners can learn more from both the city staff and the consultants and from the public. And then we take action to make referrals or recommendations to the city council who ultimately makes the decisions. Everybody here tonight will be given an opportunity to speak if they are so inclined. If you do, we'd like you to come to the microphone up here and have a seat and speak into the microphone slowly and clearly and state your name and address when you provide your information, please. And with that, what we will do, the meeting will proceed with first a staff presentation about the proposal. And then we will move into blaming comments from the public and any discussion the public may or question thing they have regarding the proposal. And from there, we can
Pardon me? Do you have?
Um.
Did you have a point, Michelle?
Yeah, that's our agenda. I got the agenda in my package. Apparently, all of them aren't the same.
Oh. Yes, okay, well, I'm just moving. I'm gonna go ahead and open the the public hearing and we'll start with the Okay, it is now 6:04 and we are gonna open the public hearing for the I-82 proposed.
We do have a PowerPoint this evening that we will just get up.
So if anything wants to turn their chair, if I'd be more comfortable in praying your name, we can just take a moment and use the opportunity to have anything to play. However, your time is up.
See, it's just You have a little bit of powerpoint. I'm doing
Yes. Alright, we'll wait just a moment so they can get everything ready for Zoom. Margaret, can you confirm if you're seeing the PowerPoint? Margaret, you may be muted.
Now I see it.
Great. Alright, we can begin with the I-82 South SubArea Plan. My name is Emily Weimer. I'm a project planner with AHBL, consultant to the city. I'm joined here tonight by Nicole Snake Stigney, our project planner, project manager at AHBL. We're a local planning firm. Our office is in Pasco. We've worked with the city for over two years. Uh, next slide, please. Hey, Margaret, are you able to admit the people in the waiting room?
I can't do that, but is JB there?
Yes, he's working on the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I think we're figuring it out.
Okay.
We're just waiting for a few more people to join us, so I thank everyone for their patience as we work through this Zoom technology issue. Alright, it looks like a few people have joined us on Zoom. Welcome to the meeting. We are just on our first slide of the presentation tonight. We started the public hearing for the I-82 South SubArea Plan. The agenda for tonight is I will first present the draft SubArea Plan, which has been prepared. I'll explain a little bit of the past processing up to this point, all that the city and its consultants have done so far. We will provide some updates. And I think a lot of people are here to speak about this, so a big part of this evening is to listen to the public. And lastly, we will determine some next steps for moving this plan forward. Next slide, please. I believe most people here should be familiar with the SubArea. We brought it to the Planning Commission before. A lot of people in the public live near it, so the SubArea is a little bit out there. It is over 235 acres, largely undeveloped. There's that gas station and a convenience store. Then the rest of it is undeveloped. The areas are owned by three property owners and of the SubArea, 95% of the land is owned by the Washington State Department of Natural Resources, which we'll call DNR throughout this presentation. The SubArea has easy auto access to the interstate and it has a great proximity to the Redman AVA. And because of these and other factors, it presents a great opportunity for development. Yes, sorry, it's a little hard to see the PowerPoint from this angle. Uh, yeah, the SubArea is that yellow color. To the south of it are is current mining operations in gray. Yes, the city limits are that dashed red line, and so you see the SubArea is stretching out against the city limits. Then to the east are some single-family homes. And then south of that is farming and undeveloped passive recreation. Okay, so before we get into what we are proposing to do, let's talk about the existing conditions. So on the left, you'll see the existing land use designation map from the city's comprehensive plan. The SubArea is outlined in blue. It is largely manufacturing and light industrial. So currently entitled to this light industrial district. On the right is the zoning map. You'll see that even more of it is light industrial, even though there's a little bit more commercial in the land use map. The zoning map doesn't quite align. So the majority of these 235 acres are currently light industrial. And in the city, at this moment, the light industrial district means a lot of different things. It allows warehousing, truck and trailer repair and sales, machine welding, foundry castrating, industrial laundries, car washes, and car repair garages. Now that's just a small list of what's available in the light industrial district. So for some example, this is what could be permitted outright today. So we can go into the next slide and talk about how we'd like to update that light industrial designation. Alright, this slide kind of outlines what we've done before and the top bar is a little hidden by that. Uh, there's a resolution number under there. And I'll have to get that resolution number as it's hidden by the Zoom slide, but there's a resolution adopted by the city council to initiate this plan. The city council then hired consultants, us, and we hired some subconsultants as directed by the city council to work on this plan. We produced early on a feasibility study and that was done by AHBL. Uh, we hired Echo Northwest to produce a market analysis. And both the feasibility study and the market analysis have been distributed to the Planning Commission previously and they are available on the website. The city with its partners, so us and Michael Mahaffey and Lawrence Kumar, hosted a design charrette. It consisted of two open houses and an online visual preference survey that was emailed out to a wide variety of people. There were some pretty good results from that survey, high turnout. And after all that, Michael Mahaffey and Lawrence Kumar presented the results of the design charrette to the city council, and I get a little more on the design charrette in some later slides. And we'd also like to highlight that we have consulted with DNR, the majority property owner throughout this process, so we could get their buy-in and take some of their comments into consideration. Uh, as of January 10th, the draft plan has been distributed. It was sent to a wide variety of stakeholders, anyone who signed up to receive it, the Planning Commission, city council, and a wide variety of people. It was put on the website afterwards. And lastly, the city issued a CIPA DNS on the proposal. A few major comments came in, so we are considering how to revise this DNS and that will be issued probably later this week. Yes, I do have a slide on the environmental review. CIPA, the environmental reprocess. And I do have a slide on that, we can get to that. Uh, one second.
Everyone will get a turn to come up and ask questions.
Yes, thanks. This is pretty long presentation as it's a pretty long plan, so I want to give you all as much information as I can provide at this time. So how was the public notice published? We followed the public noticing in accordance with the Benton City Municipal Code requirements for legislative items. That means it was posted on the city's website at City Hall and it was published in the Tri-City Herald. We do have an email distribution list, so if anyone in the audience is not on it and would like to be, please provide us with your email after this presentation and we can get you on that list. As I said, the draft plan was emailed to that email distribution list in early January, so that's a great way to find out updates about this plan. And on the bottom is a snapshot of the city's website. There is a dedicated page to it. And I kind of zoomed in on the side with the documents. There are previous medium presentation slides. There's the feasibility report that we prepared. A presentation video and the market analysis, and that's all on the city's website right now. And on the left is just a copy of the public notice, a portion of the public notice that was distributed. Next, please. Okay, so as I mentioned, we are very happy to have this draft plan available for review. It was provided to the Planning Commissioners and other people earlier this month. And it was emailed out to that distribution, and this is just a picture of the cover. Next, please. Okay, and I, in this slide, I'll go a little bit more into CIPA, which is the environmental review. We are planning to issue a revised DNS, a determination of non-significance based on three comments that the city received during the comment period. DOP, the Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation notified the city that there is a pre-contact archaeological site and possible burial site. So that means any future development will require a permit through DOP. So that's something that's information that the city did not have available previously, so it's really good to know at this point. Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Uh, so we are revising the DNS to include mitigation measures for future development, including requiring an archaeological study and to obtain that permit from DOP before any work. The Yakima tribe concurred with the DOP recommendations and requests future coordination. So we're including a mitigation measure to consult with the tribes prior to any development. Our second comment letter was the WDFW, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. They noted that they're mapping that there's imperiled shrubs that habitat and it's a possible critical area. So we revised the DNS to include a mitigation measure that future development must conduct a habitat assessment prior to any groundbreaking activities. And then finally, Wash- Washington State Department of Transportation submitted a letter with several comments. They're mostly concerned about the efficiency of Interstate 82, Exit 96 interchange. It's currently operating perfectly, not perfectly, optimally, optimally for their standards, and so they want to maintain the functionality of that interchange. So we revised the DNS to include a mitigation measure that future developments must ensure that traffic generated by the project will not adversely affect the operation of the interchange. And so that will likely require transportation impact analysis. But that will be determined when any future development proposals come in. Okay, so this is a picture of the design charrette. It's, it was in this room, so Nicole in that picture is now at the computers. Yes, I, yeah, it was two days in July, pretty warm, and we actually walked on the site and it was over 100 degrees. Uh, but through this design charrette, we presented all the information we have, we had collected such as the market analysis and our feasibility study to stakeholders. It was an open house. A lot of people were invited. We tried to get the invite to a lot of different organizations and places. So it's well attended. And if you go to the next slide, we can talk about the results of that meeting, or those series of meetings. Uh, the subconsultants are urban designers. And they created three different options for this theoretical SubArea design. The option one is a straightforward grid pattern. So they, we don't have the colors noted, but the red would be commercial, yellow is residential, and the orange is multifamily, and the green is open space. And then they created a second option, this rotating grid to colonize on those view corridors and maybe more artistic area. And so option three is where they combined everything, everything from those series of meetings and create the synthesis scheme. And that option three is what we incorporated into that draft plan document. Some of you may already be familiar with these designs if you're part of the design charrette. Yeah. Uh, and then this is just a rendering of those, of that drawing. So the option three synthesis scheme. We can leave this up for a minute. The red is commercial, light industrials, purple, multifamily in brown, single-family in yellow, and civic and definition blue. And this is not what went into the plan. We did adjust it a little and I, later on in PowerPoint, I'll show you what we took from this and what's in the plan. And then, of course, the street trees and the lawn winding roads and the park. And if you're familiar with that area, the southeast corner is more of that higher sloped area, so that's the idea of that open space up on the southeast corner.
The winding? Like towards the edge, towards the city limit?
Yeah, I believe that was a park up the hill.
So it's just like a walking path or something?
I believe so. And that was not translated directly into the plan. Okay, if there's no more questions, we can move on to the next slide. Okay, this was actually the slide that was in the picture from the design charrette. I'm presenting it again. This would be a really great table that describes the market analysis by Econ, Econo-Norwest, Eco-Norwest? Eco-Norwest. Um, it looked at the tri-cities of the whole Benton City market. It looked at the various land uses and looked at the site suitability and the market trends and the market potential. So the conclusion was for sale residential, very strong. Now you see industrial up on top, moderate to stable. And so the idea of leaving it industrial as it is may not be suitable to this market. So that's why we brought in a lot of residential in this plan because of this market analysis. Also interesting, wine-oriented, strong to moderate, site suitability, and strong market trends. And so that was also another connection that we explored. And through this process, we did a SWOT analysis. That's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I don't need to read all of these, but those, we did look at all of these when we created this plan. Let's leave it up for a second. I'm going to go to the next slide. Alright, let's move on to the next slide. So now that I've talked all about what's been done and a little bit about what this is, I can talk about what's in the plan. There are six kind of chapters. One is just an introduction, background of the area, things like that. Two, SubArea characteristics, that's where we dive deeper into such, the slopes, other factors that affect the SubArea. The three is community engagement. That's where we really outline all the past efforts and the charrette, and we go into detail about the survey results, which were very informative. Four is the SubArea Planning Process and Vision, vision of the, why we're doing this. And then five, we get into the plan elements, and I'll talk about each of these elements. So there's land use, transportation and mobility, recreation, open space, utilities and capital facilities, and community character. Then lastly, we have our implementation framework. So how do we take this plan and move it forward? Okay, so this is for the first element. This is our current proposed land use map. So it is a little different than the charrette. Uh, the, you see, the gray industrial area is very much shrunk down. And there's a lot more residential. And there's a little bit of adjusted commercial. So I'll give everyone a minute to let this sink in. So the commercial is on the west side, easy access to the highway. That's the best place for commercial. And the residential is and placed ideally away from the highway noise. You do see a little bit of residential adjacent to the highway on the east end, but that's because of the slopes. The highway noise is a little bit shielded. And then for the light industrial, the vision is more smaller light industrial spaces to support the wine industry if we can. So we really want this area to be a live-work area. There are jobs, limited retail, and healthy living spaces. And so it's important to note that while there is not a parks designation, that doesn't mean we're not planning for parks. We just don't. Because this is such a blank slate, blank space, we don't have an exact location for a city park. And I can talk about parks when we get to that element, but we do have a whole element on it and there are plans for parks. Okay. Need a little water.
Yeah, everyone will have a chance to speak after she's done.
She has to catch her breath. So my name's Nicole Stickney with AHBL, and just a couple of things I just want to reiterate that Emily's touched on before we go into these elements, and like I said, give her a chance to kind of catch her breath there. I want to be clear that this land is already in the city. It's already incorporated in the city, so I don't want anyone to think, oh, when did this come in? When was this annexed? I never knew about it. It's been in the city limits for quite some time. We've mentioned that we've done some other reports and studies leading up to this effort. Those are all available on the website, so if you're interested in seeing what our feasibility study looked like, that's where you're going to find information about the steep slopes that are out there, the owners that surround the site. The steep slopes that are out there, the owners that surround the site, we have some specific information about the mining operation that's to the south. Because that was significant for noise and other impacts. And then, as she mentioned, there was a market analysis done by Echo Northwest, we felt that was very important to bring to bear with this planning effort. Because we wanted to make sure that some of the things that we suggested were really rational. And could be carried out in the next twenty years. And then before I turn it back over to Emily, just a little note about the plan itself. Plan, this plan, once adopted by council, and of course, we don't know what the final form would be yet, that's why we're here tonight is to hear from you and so we can make some adjustments. Do some more work on it as as might be necessary or proceed. As it may be preferred, but in any event, my point is that it's going to be an adopted plan at some point. But it's also going to be a living document in that it can be amended over time, it would expect that there would be changes over time as to this plan. As market conditions change, as development occurs, we can't predict the future, we don't know exactly how many people are going to be moving to Benton City, but. Certainly, we want to be poised for those opportunities, and so that's just something I wanted to put out there for you to keep in mind is that. We want to come up with a plan, but then I would encourage you to remain involved, you know, it's the years to come. As the city might look at other opportunities or different things that can come about on the horizon, so that's all I wanted to add in at this point.
Thank you. Okay. We will now dive into the land use element, so. I talk about the objectives. So this plan is really striving to strategically plan for growth. We want to be smart about it, we want to plan. For housing, the plan would like to offer a variety of housing choices for future homeowners and renters. It really aims to provide dense walkable neighborhoods for economic development. Strive for community growth and progress. We want to take advantage of that proximity to and access to the Red Mountain AVA. And this plan does encourage light industrial and commercial, however, in a scale that's appropriate to be mixed with residential. Next slide please. Okay, now on to the transportation and mobility element. The goals are to create connected, continuous and safe pedestrian network. Throughout and to the sub area, so we want to connect it to the downtown core, we want it to be walkable and bikeable. Accessible to all throughout the sub area. Then we have identified some catalyst projects, I won't go through all of them. One of them is a possible central boulevard for the city to consider different funding sources for this nice boulevard throughout the project. Transit shelter, we'd like the city to continue coordinating with BFT, we do have BFT here tonight. And we love to keep coordinating with them on possible future transit routes. Trees and landscaping, we really want to highlight native landscaping to take advantage of this gorgeous area. And the street alignment, there is a conceptual street grid in this plan, it is in no way. Limiting to future streets, it's just a conceptual idea of what the best placements can be, however, based on future development. And once we get the topo of the area, that street alignment may change. Now on to the recreation and open space element. Some of the goals are to plan for another parkland and open space in appropriate areas that are open and accessible to all. Another goal is to preserve and enhance the natural environment. So we've identified two catalyst projects, a community park, so the city shall review feasibility of a community level park. Dependent on future development pattern and funding sources. And I'd also like to note that the city does require parkland dedication or fees in lieu during their normal subdivision process. So even without this plan, a development would have to provide parkland or money for the city. No, it's fine. Onto the utilities and capital facilities element. Utilities and capital facilities mostly just water and sewer, however. We do note that other utility coordination should be conducted with those private utilities. But for context, the city has already invested lots of money into extending water and sewer in this area. The city received ARPA funds, I'm not sure what ARPA stands for. But they received some federal funds to extend water and sewer to the sub area. Some of the goals of this element is to provide safe, reliable and economical water and sewer to the residents and businesses. And some of the catalyst projects are water and sewer, which will occur naturally as development or as the city gets grant funding. Modeling. The water and sewer capacity to determine the pressure zones and fire flows. Next please. Interestingly, this is our community character element. With a strong vision for community character that balances function, aesthetics and compatibility. Some of their goals are to use commercial, recreational and interpretive opportunities to immerse visitors in a sense of place. And a connection with the wine industry. And the other goal is to create a well-designed and aesthetically pleasing city that reflects the small town character of Benton City. So a lot of this community character element came from the results of the survey. That residents were invited to take. And also directed by the city council, the mayor, their vision for the community character of the suburb. Okay, now, our last chapter is this implementation framework. We provides methods, short, mid, long term and ongoing. And the four categories are development regulations, city plans, capital projects and marketing. And we do include that the city periodically review this plan and update it as necessary, as Nicole said, this is. A living, breathing document like all legislation that should be reviewed and updated as development occurs. And lastly, we outlined a few possible funding mechanisms for the implementation of some of these projects. Next please. Okay, so after all that information, you might be asking, what's next? So Planning Commission hopefully has had a chance to review the draft plan. If people in the audience haven't had a chance yet. It's available on the website, you can sign up for my email list, I can email it to you. But tonight is for taking public comments. Now, if the Planning Commission would like, they can leave the public hearing open to their next meeting if they would like to extend it. Another option for the Planning Commission is to request certain changes. To this plan or ask staff slash HBL to do further research on anything that you'd like. But after all of that and the Planning Commission is satisfied with their recommendation. Then we'll get a recommendation from the Planning Commission. We'll take that to the city council, they can, they have the option to hold a public hearing or multiple public hearings or they could request workshops on that item. But it is a city council action to formally adopt a legislative plan. Nicole have anything to add before we open it up to public comment? Okay. Yeah.
Okay, here's your advice is chance commissioner, she can ask being quick and dirty.
Okay, I'm Michelle McLeod, Commissioner McLeod, and obviously, a lot of people have not. Participated in the activities that have been planned by the city. And it's obvious to me from what I read briefly. With the last minute paperwork. This is a long-term project, it's a living, breathing entity where. There's not going to be like three hundred homes overnight over there, but it has been talked about and there has been workshops and there has been notifications. And there's a lot of information that you people need. So that you can see what's over there, I mean. There's all kinds of plans for homes and apartments and different densities. Of housing and there's parks and recreation plans. And it's going to be a gradual slow process, it's not going to be anything that happens overnight. And there's also plans for businesses. Across by the closer to the freeway. Where there'll be all kinds of amenities. And there's also plans for a grade school over there, so that the children that live in those homes. Will be will be able to walk to school. And there's a lot of plans that have been in in the works. But none of it is happening overnight. And. It would serve you well also to continue with the city council because we don't make any deciding. Decisions on anything, we don't own the property, we're not the city planners as per se that we've hired. To figure out how to guide people that are buying that property. Yeah, go ahead, please do.
I was just wondering if you wouldn't mind clarifying that some of those things you talked about as being plants, they're really concepts.
They're concepts.
Yeah, so there's no plan for school, but there's a concept.
There's a concept.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
It's right, nothing is written in stone here, it's just we we read our packets.
Okay, so that was my question to you, Michelle, so there are no written plans that these the public can access. To clean information about future business schools.
Right.
Developments, there are none.
No.
I just don't want.
I would.
Send these books to the city website and therefore to Carla's and where's Sam from.
Well, I'd really like him to have the option to read all of this. Off the website, if you go to the. To the Benton City website, the official one, and you go to the Planning Commission and you push the minutes. You can read all of this, it's it's pretty simple to get up on there. And we just read it, we've been, I went to one of the workshops. And that the public was here for. So nothing is written in stone, it's all just speculation at this point.
And so just so I'm kind of on the same page, I didn't see anything in this document about it. Put a school over there, did I miss the boat?
There's a principle that's on on. The internet that might talk about it, I don't know, but.
It is there because I should.
I was at the planning, I was at the meeting.
Well, I was camping, so I wasn't, and most of these people weren't there either, and so we're probably trying to make some of the same understanding.
That's my concern.
Ma'am, can you please?
Hi, my name is Carrie Meyer, goodness, Carrie Meyer, I live at two six seven zero two Pear Drive, Benton City, Washington. I actually, we've recently moved there about eighteen months ago and. One thing I would encourage you guys to do. Is, well, it's great that you guys posted this on the website. Not everybody goes to the Benton City website. And really, you know, we're, many of us are in the community adjacent to this. And had no idea of the public meetings, any of that, and it's a simple matter of, you know, posting something on the mailbox so that people know this. I appreciate commissioner, your your words, we want to be involved, we want to engage, that's why we're here tonight. But there are some concerns that that we want to share and I'm just going to speak on behalf of me myself. But you know. You invest in a property. And you have a long-term commitment. You have all touched on many of the things that are. The reasons we've all built up there. The scenic views, the remoteness, it's most definitely not access to water. I will tell you that. And you know, the concern is, at least for me, your plans talk about trees, now I saw some contradictory things, you know, native vegetation. There was a lot of information in your document and I did read it. That talked about the great views. We don't want those views to be obstructed by apartment buildings. Or, you know, homes that that destroy it or. A ton of trees, if you go up there and drive around, well, we all like trees, you'll notice there are no trees that would obstruct the view. And that's not something that the the neighborhood has gotten together to discuss, it's just, it's just known. The other thing is, again, this is a long-term plan, but as you make these plans. We encourage you to engage the existing community. On restrictions or requirements, height restrictions, when you talk about your your multifamily housing. Well, I I've only been up there for eighteen months, I grew up in Benton City, so I consider myself a native. And I'm not trying to be negative, but. The state of, I would say, the majority of the apartment complexes in Benton City. Are not conducive to a neighborhood of six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar homes. And that is concerning to me. Great ideas about parks and and those things, the idea about the, I'll say, I'll kind of call it a wine hub. That's all great, but there has to be consideration of the existing neighborhood that is there. And. It would be very detrimental for the whole, the whole endeavor. To work this as a completely individual neighborhood. Benton City's growth is good for all of us. But done with consideration. And engagement and inclusion of those who are most affected, which I would say in many ways is. The Valley View Estates that are adjacent to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I did want to make one comment though regarding, because this is basically a proposal, there is not going to be any earth moving at this point. There was not individual mailings made to neighbors, that's my interpretation and. You will correct me if I'm wrong. So because of that, if there were to be such an endeavor, there would be, the neighbors would be. Directly contacted via mail or some other form, so. With that said, and yes, ma'am, please come up, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I'm. I'm sorry, just to offer, if that happens and I'm I'm giving my information. Let me know, I mean.
I I understand. I very. Yeah. Yeah, and you are.
Okay, for the record, Kelly Sayer, S E H E R. Twenty eight four oh two Pear Drive. I worked for the city of West Richland in the Planning Commission. When the twenty year comprehensive plan came about. And that is why I bought where I bought. Because nothing was slated.
Right.
Nothing, that was only four years ago. Just thank you, Linda. I'm a big rally of Benton City, I love Benton City. A very wise man, my boss said, don't work in the city you live in. So I moved to Benton City. My big concern, and I've been there and I love all my new neighbors. But the dust control is going to be a huge issue. Huge issue. As these guys built their homes and I love the neighborhood growing. Just inches and inches of dust.
And they were about.
Mining, mining operation. Primarily.
Actually, it was when they.
Actually, it was when they were digging and building the foundations for all the homes. I'm I'm square number two from the bottom. And as square number seven, eight, twelve, it just blew. I I have a big my big concern is the dust issue. The view lot also, they advertised our homes as view lots, an extra fifty grand. My water, our water bill, we're on a community well. Is that going to, we're uphill, is that going to, water's an issue for me? Is that going to draw off our water table? Bring this down? The right of ways. We just put in two carports, one on the side, one on a block wall, a fence. We had to come in front of you guys to get a variance, to get another eighteen feet. Now are they going to come in and take out my block wall? Are they going to take out my fence to run water? The fire, we're always on fire alert, always on fire alert. I would like to see, so I am like here in the brown. If everybody has a map. I would rather see up on that hill, the parks area in that place versus the multifamily home. And and as long as we're not doing the gavel tonight, I'll keep paying attention. And like I said, we don't, we can't vote. We're county. My my backyard is literally the county property. So and I'm sure some other people have other things to say, but I'm going to make that short and sweet, and those are my.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, please, sir.
Well, aloha, kako everyone. My name is Jeff Von Schmouter, and it's J E double F, and the last name is V O N S C H M A U D E R. I live in Maui, Hawaii, and I'm a newcomer to Benton City, but I'm very involved in the local community here and grateful to be a part of it. Having the opportunity to have lenses in other places, I'm really grateful to see what Benton City is all about from the historical perspective and also excited about the potentiality of this project. But I am concerned that there's a lot of us that haven't been exposed to what's been going on, and I would highly suggest that we have a sort of a community action group that's also a part of this. So I think it's fantastic. We have government involvement. We've got some some fantastic consultants. And at the same time, I think we also need to have some kind of a a citizens organization, which is helping to provide input on an ongoing basis as we move forward with this. You know, as I've looked at other projects in the tri-cities, like, you know, Vista Fields that has gone on, I call it the Vista Fields of Dreams. You know, been invited over there to invest in that project. And while the city has done, they spent millions of dollars. There's really not a lot to show for it there, and I would hate for that to replicate itself here up in this opportunity here. And I think, you know, in Hawaii, we have a plan called the Maui Vision Twenty Fifty Plan, which talks about the city and how it's going. And I, my concern is is that I I see a lot of beautiful charrettes and beautiful drawings, but in terms of how we actually execute on that and making sure that it actually does happen, it's important that, you know, it's 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 to me a a combination of stakeholders, you know, the community, the government and the consultants. And I think that leg of the stool is a little bit missing in this. And so while I'm grateful for us to have this open forum, I would also encourage the powers that be to maybe bring in the Benton City Revitalization Organization as a possible group. Or, you know, we have a citizens group that could come forward and be involved on a on a continual basis as the plan proceeds. So that we can this this evolves into something that is a benefit for everybody. And so anyways, I I'm grateful to be part of the Benton City Business Community. I've I've invested significantly here. I believe in this town, this community, and I've met some amazing people here, and it's definitely changed my life. And while I wasn't born and raised here, I would definitely say there's a certain sense of aloha spirit that lives in Benton City, and I sure hope that we can keep that alive in the in the wake of of progress and development. So, thank you.
Thank you. So you're not volunteering to lead a group?
At this point, it's all speculatively speaking anyway.
So i- i- is there anybody else in the audience you would like to speak or who may have brought a written statement? Oh, okay, there's one more person in the audience, and then we will go to the person on the screen.
Thank you. My name is Rick Resto, Harry S T O, two, one, zero, zero, five, East Berry Drive, Benton City. I'm probably not going to say much that's that's varied from some of the other comments, but I think some of our concerns would be there there were a couple of references to adjacent property owners being contacted in this process. And clearly, those are the the properties behind this property, not adjacent properties in the county in in our development, because there there is nobody that was contacted with regards to that. So I I would encourage you with whatever you do to improve that situation and providing our emails for contacts is is very helpful. I I am more sensitive to the property owners that are actually on the county-city border, several of which are here just to to consider and how that property is developed in having appropriate buffer, parking or parkland, or whatever it is that would make that a little bit easier for that transition. They, I actually hadn't thought about the dust situation, the dirt situation, but even in our little development where there there was development done to the south. The 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 dirt and dust that we get is is not from the quarry. It it's from the land. And and it's it's I mean, anybody that's lived around here understands what what it is, especially when it's windy around here. You see, even in no windows, there's dirt on the sill after a windstorm. I mean, it's it's bad. I I will say this from from one perspective, I I I would rather that that land be used for residential and or parkland versus light industrial. So I guess there's a benefit in in impossible future rezoning of that. But I would, I would like to see the the plan done in a way that that it is representative of and respective of of the adjacent properties and what what those look like, so it'd be somewhat consistent. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience here? Yes, please come forward. So everybody showed up to talk tonight. We usually get a lot of, you know, if you like, just come to see what's going on. Thank you.
My name's Stephanie Latham, and I live at two, seven, eight, zero, six, Pear Drive. And so I am actually on the side where my backyard borders the DNR lands. And most of us in that general area chose to move out there because they were, you know, the larger lots, and we were trying to get away from the denser areas and the view and everything else that everybody else has said. On the future land use map, it's showing multi-use residential area behind me. And so for me with children, safety is a concern for us, not only privacy, but we're concerned about who might be moving in there. And so I I would recommend or ask for consideration and potentially the lots that are right on the opposite side of the fence line or property line, that those would be consistent with the existing development lot sizes. Just to to give some consideration for the existing property owners.
That's it?
Yep, that's it. Everybody else said everything else. Thank you.
Alrighty. To make sure nobody else within this building. Yep, okay, we're going to go to the online participants. Margaret, I can't tell if anybody out there wants to comment.
There's several people out there, but I don't know if they want to comment. Tina, do you want to comment?
Hi, Tina Hochschwender with the Department of Natural Resources. It's H O C H W E N D E R here in the Olympia office today. I just think that Emily and Nicole did a good job, and I was appreciative of them inviting us to to review the documents and and take a look at it and provide our inputs. And I'm just kind of here more to listen.
Well, thank you for your participation. Yes, absolutely. They work for you. Oh, sorry, you don't work. I used to work for the state, so I just.
I didn't hear what she said. I'm sorry.
She asked if she could contact you directly, and I'm assuming that you're a government employee.
She sure can. Emily has my contact information. If you feel free to forward it on.
Thank you. Sorry to insert myself in your.
No, no worries. Oh, look at that. The lights just went out in the office. I'm in the dark.
Okay, somebody had said there was somebody else online. Nobody else?
Pete Peterson, did you want to speak?
Yeah, if if you don't mind, I didn't fill out a form or anything. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the superintendent of the school district here. And I just wanted to say that, you know, my my interest in this is is preliminary, simply because I I try to get ahead of any any long-term planning that's going on. We obviously don't have any plans for any new schools anytime soon, directly out of the the earth, so to speak, but we are in the process of trying to complete a ten-year a ten-year plan for our facilities. So I'm trying to stay on top of any any developments or any potential down the road. And obviously, when things like this are are being considered, I have to have several branches off of that original plan to to play with the potential options. So I appreciate everyone's hard work on this and and very much appreciate the opportunity to simply observe and and take notes of of what's going on because as several people have said, you know, while this is a a long-term project, the first, the first shovel that gets put in the ground sets off a chain reaction of other things that that I just need to make sure that the school district and is prepared for. So I want to thank you for everyone's hard work on this, and please don't ever hesitate to reach out if if there's any questions or things that might come up.
Thank you so much for your offer.
Joel, did you want to speak?
He actually texted and said we covered it all, so.
Okay, so, okay.
Everything was covered on, she did a really good job on covering it. We have all the same concerns. My name is Joel Gomez. I live on two, seven, two, one, three, North Pear. And it's just that concern, you know, do we have big enough schools to support all these new families coming in? You know, I I understand, we want to keep the consistency of our lots. Is that going to hurt the wildlife? Do you guys have any concerns of the TNT that actually goes into these minings and what it does to our buildings over here? Have you guys ever been here when when they're mining and they set off one of these bombs? It it kind of shakes your house a little bit, you know, kind of scary. So just keep into consideration that that all this stuff can can affect people in the long run, you know? We're right behind that that mountain. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you to everyone who is spoken person. Okay, come on back up. Tell us who you are again, one more time, please.
Carrie Meyer, two, six, seven, oh, two, Pear Drive, Benton City. So you've heard from a lot of people tonight. Just want to summarize a few things for you to really look at. Joel just talked about the mining. I will, I'll be frank. We did not know that there was a mining operation going on back there, and the first time that they blasted, we thought we had a wall that fell down. I mean, we went running out of the house looking for the damage. And a lot, no one else that we talked to knew what the heck it was. So there's that, consider it. The other thing is, as you go forward and start doing your assessments, water is a big concern. We're on a community well that serves a huge part of Red Mountain. And our house is just a slight bit up. We cannot get enough water to run a shower and a sprinklers.
The city extended a water line under the freeway to accommodate this development.
Great. Perfect. That's good. Yeah, but just something to consider. The other thing is, it at least, so we're the highest up on that hill. And they ran into some some serious topography issues that they had not seen. Huge rock beds. And covered with, you know, you've heard about the dust here. It's moon dust. You know, we're on point nine acres. The first two weeks we were there, we tilled forty yards of compost in just so we could plant grass. So just it's very salty. Those are all things you have to think about, and that's kind of where you've heard a lot of the the comments that have come up today. Besides the, you know, the views and the lot sizes. So it's just things to keep in mind. And then again, you know, please reach out. We all want to stay engaged. We're all committed to the the next steps done right. Thanks.
Well, you can go back here. But I, well, I have an audience here. People came here to participate. I am consistently hearing this over and over again. I am not pointing fingers at anyone on this commission, anyone who's worked for the city, the consultants, nothing. We need to do something different with public outreach because people, it's constant complaint. People are angry that they're not aware of what's happening. They're either not checking in on the website, which I don't blame them. Who's going to go do that? We all have lives. Is there anything that the the public out there would like to, can you request or recommend or just anything? We're just brainstorming right now. We're not going to say we're going to do it. Yes, please, please.
So Jeff Von Schmouter again, I'd recommend, you know, we all have get water bills and things like that. So there may be ways to incorporate just, you know, putting the information in along with some of the billing that we get. So there's, you know, that's one way to to help get the word out. You know, we also have some great organizations, Chamber of Commerce, B C R O, a lot of civic organizations, you know, churches. I'm not sure how how the information gets disseminated, but I think sort of some grassroots efforts might help get the word out. And if we do put together kind of a citizens advisory committee that could could, I guess I'd like to put that idea forward, and I'm happy to help spearhead that and and maybe a group of us could at least be liaisons to help get the word out. So maybe we have a grassroots group, but but could we use the water bills, for instance, or?
Yeah, part of the problem with that, I'll just respond to that, is there are still people with stuff digging well in town.
Sure.
And so, and then, yeah.
Irrigation district or? Yeah.
Yeah, we have two, and they only, they don't do monthly billing.
You know, we'll we'll go talk to the Mormons and the missionaries can come out and do, you know, door-to-door, we'll do door knock or whatever it takes for for everyone to get out. But there's got to be a better way. And I think if we can come up with some ideas.
And I'm just.
Let's help, let's help make it happen.
Yeah, I'm acknowledging that there's something
Yeah.
happening. It seems like we got a lot of discussion out there. Anybody else?
So I I do this for a living somewhat, and you know, as Jeff said,
Excuse me, she needs to come to the mic, please.
You need to say your name again every time.
Carrie Meyer. So there are a lot of different ways you can do it. There's no one way that's right, and there's not going to be just a couple of ways that are going to hit everybody. You're going to have to do kind of a cafeteria plan. And it comes down to all of the things that you're doing. But social media and looking for, you know, there are a lot of different Benton City groups out there. Whoever manages your social media. Whoever manages your social media account should subscribe to those so that when they post, it goes out on those pages as well. And then, you know, I do think like Betonaria, if you can get them to put something in, great. Or, you know, posting it up at the different stores around town. Places that you see people go. I understand the city does not have the resources to do door to door. But then also reaching out to those groups or people who are on your mailing list and saying, hey, can you help us get the word out? It it's just, it's kind of a hit and miss. And I I appreciate you saying, hey, we got to do better. I will tell you, you always have to do better. I mean, that's how I, that's, I do it for Hanford. We always have to do better. We're never going to meet everyone. But use the the resources that you have and and rely on them.
And they they do a really good job. It's just there's a number of people that are coming in and they're.
Yeah, and and for for us, I mean, I think really, I'll be honest, I was I was pretty mad because we're right adjacent, had no clue. And I get it. We can go out and look on those websites. We don't always do it. There's, you know, some both sides, but just some suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And I I'm sorry I put that out there, but I just had to because again, this way, not the first meeting that we've.
Kelly Sayer, wait, four oh two North Pair. I moved here in 2017 because it was going to be the next best place past West Richland. And I will give you this much. I saw stuff every month, every week. I got an email, got an email, got an email. Our lockdown hit. Everything got shut down. Nothing was happening. And sorry neighbors, but I stopped reading because there was nothing going on. In all offense, this city has been awesome on putting things out there. All you had to do and everywhere, and finally, it was like delete, 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 because nothing was happening. So I will give it that much. And I'm just as at fault to not go back. And now that things are moving again and start reading my Benton City website.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, I'm sorry I inserted that in. We have to go. We did get some written comments. And I kind of did this backwards because I was thinking that you did not have much time to look at these comments that you had received. These written letters. I know most of those you covered in your presentation. At this point, do we just take that documentation and acknowledge it and put it into the meeting next? If they were addressed to you and we made?
They were. I believe they came to Carla. Okay, so she talks. Does that cover your email? Or is there anything else you'd like to say? And then Bailey Smith. It's a pretty long one. If, you know, the clerk could read it into the record.
Which one are you referring to reading in? Was it one of the the agencies? Was it?
It was the personal one. That's what I was referring.
That's why I'm looking at the government stuff.
I can't find it now.
Thank you, future volunteer.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, yes, we are. We are.
Pardon me, gavel. All right, all right, all right.
Okay, I'm going to read one of the comments that we received from a Bailey Smith. She lives in two seven two one four North Plum Drive, just above where the future land use development proposal is. She had a few questions and comments to bring up as a current resident in the specific area. The high density housing seems inconsistent with the rural nature of this area. Most of us bought our homes out here for that reason, is as it is still rural in nature and was a way to get away from the high density housing in tri cities. This could possibly impact our current home values due to this. Has the city considered this? Her second point was, has the city considered traffic impacts of this proposal? If not, how can can you approve this until it's understood whether the roads can handle what will be a significant increase in traffic? The roundabout is already jam packed during high traffic times, and this seems like it will make it even worse. Can the bridge withstand multiple cars essentially being parked on it for hours a day due to increased traffic time in the roundabout for work commuters? Her third point, has the city county considered the impacts on schools to this proposal? What about the increased busing requirements? Can Kybe handle the increase in students with the future families moving into this high density housing? If not, how can this be approved until that is understood? Her fourth point, this area has has almost zero infrastructure amenities typically found in dense housing areas. For instance, the nearest park is three miles away and therefore use unusable by children in this area. How does that coincide with the environmentally friendly activities proposed if these children have to drive to the nearest park, play park? Has the city county considered requiring developers to set aside areas and installing parks, walking trails, et cetera, as part of any permit approvals? Or has the city considered installing a park for this area themselves? There is also no grocery store in this area, which you typically find in high density housing areas. Will the proposed commercial area include this? To be considered environmentally friendly area, there should be a grocery store included in plans. Otherwise, we will all have to continue either driving to this Kybe Mart four miles away or all the way into tri cities as many of us do. Please consider these concerns from a current resident of the proposed development area, Bailey Padilla.
All righty, so I got those in there. And that was it. We had the two, and they're both, okay. Pardon me, was there another? Yes, yes, they were. And if you write a letter, we do consider those. Even if we don't read them within the meeting, which we've had those submitted in the past, and some of them are quite lengthy. We did receive several letters that Emily had addressed regarding from various government entities. That's just the Department of Archaeology and Transportation and such. So those issues were addressed. And so we're all up to speed there. And so from that, does the public have any more comments or questions, especially from our technical staff who is present here today, or from any of the commissioners? Or we close the public comment section of the meeting? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Okay, I'm scared.
Hi, my name's Renee Couchman, C O U C H M A N, and I live at twenty one three oh seven East Berry Drive. We have been there almost six years. There'll be six years in June. And I just felt like in the in the development there that we're, we're not learning anything about what's going on down here. And when we moved here six years ago, I came down because I was thinking about getting involved with the chamber and everything. And I just, the whole, the whole atmosphere right here made us feel very uncomfortable. We went to the little restaurant and and that was a joke at that time. And and I just feel like, you know, you guys don't seem to reach out to the new community. And we are bringing a lot of revenue, even though we are in the county, but we are bringing a lot of revenue into the city. And so when we got this, and I guess it was our neighbor that put the post on our door, you know, and you're talking about long term. What is long term to you guys? Is that ten years from now, five years from now, fifteen years? I mean, here, like you said, nothing is done overnight. And everything takes lots of time, especially now. So I'm just wondering, what, what is, you must have a, an idea of what you're talking about for the development?
I mean, right, right now, basically what we have is we have a big chunk of land across through a freeway that we need to make future plans to say, we're not just going to wait until a developer comes knocking and says, do you want to, I don't know, put a nuclear plant out there? We're going to make considerations, start thinking about, is it appropriate for what type of business or what uses?
Well, you said that you guys have, the city has owned the land for quite, for quite a while.
We don't own it. It's with the city limits. No, we don't dictate what can occur on the property.
But you must have a speculation. I mean, when, from Kennewick, when they did twenty seven, twenty years earlier, they knew how Twenty Seventh Avenue was going to turn out. I saw plans on that.
Well, that's what we're doing is we're speculating.
They had an idea of what the long term.
That's what we're doing with this plan. We're speculating, but it right now.
You don't have a deadline?
No.
We both worked on the twenty year plan, and most of that hasn't transpired.
No, no. Someone off course here. Do you have anything specific to?
No, I just, no, I don't. I mean, that was my only thing. And that's why I said you guys covered everything quite well. But I was just wondering, you know, if you had a future deadline or a deadline you were shooting for. How's that?
For the plan, we want, we'd like to get this sub portion of our plan for this sub area. We would like to have this finalized, which does not, when we say that it's finalized.
I understand that.
Is so that we can incorporate this into what we call our comprehensive planning document for the city.
So what is your goal on that?
Tells us basically.
I mean, when do you plan? When, I mean, I I don't see how you, I don't understand. And forgive me if I don't understand, but you have to have a goal to, you want to reach out, like you hired these people to to do the research and stuff. Did you not give them a deadline? Did you not say, well, I'd like to have this done within the next two years?
Well, your, your deadline for the plan is going to be probably six months, and it will be done, and it will be in our.
Okay, well, it just gives the people an idea.
But but see, the difference is, just because plan is going to be done, this document will be done. The moving dirt.
The steps. And that's what I'm trying to get out of you, or get an idea of what are the steps?
Until the council adopts, it makes a decision, there's, there's nothing in concrete. You're asking for something. You're asking for a concrete specific answer. The concrete hasn't even been mixed together yet.
Okay, okay. So you're just, just getting started.
Figuring out what we're going to put in the Mexico concrete. And hopefully, one day it gets figured out, and the council blesses it. They answer questions and 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 keep up their hard work. I've got some interesting questions for them, so we'll get to their.
All right, all right. Well, thank you. All righty, okay. So from there, any more comments?
I'd like to comment, just Michelle McLeod, Commissioner McLeod. Is it all of this is speculation? But the reason that cities have plans like this is so that someone doesn't come in, a developer, and then just put in anything they want. And it's just all wish washed everywhere, which way? So that there's a plan in place to keep them from doing that. So it's a cohesive plan. If ever there is a development. And I read that letter that was just read out loud. And that's what I was rebutting, that in the future, if this ever does take place, all of her concerns will be taken care of because it's been thought out in case this does happen down the road. That's pretty much, it's just all a speculation. And it's a way of keeping contractors from just doing whatever they want. So that there's a well thought out plan in case this does happen. And I I feel the need to apologize that people didn't get notices. You know, I I know that the council normally does that. And the fact that you guys have wells probably restricted a lot of paperwork coming to you because I know that they send stuff out in the water bills. And it's.
We just have one well. It's a community well. So we have a water company, Great Basin Water.
Yeah, see, and we have separate water companies, and we have separate irrigation companies. And in a lot of ways, we're separated. And there's been two meetings, one of which I got to participate in. And I'm sure that they can be found on the internet. And I'm sorry that you guys weren't there because your point is very important. And we don't really make decisions there. We end up with referrals to the council from things that people say that come here. So what you've said is important.
Other commissioners?
Questions?
Yes.
Len Burton, a couple of questions. On your access to Jacob's role, were you looking possibly at doing a recommendation for access to what they do in a lot of the newer developments? Or this is a limited access on the main road?
No, no additional design standards are proposed with this plan. So just the normal city design standards. And that's not part of the city's design standards right now.
Okay, okay, okay. A little concern, you mentioned that water and sewer would go in if the roads and that were put in. Looking at that, the elevation differences where the city gets its water is going to take about a hundred and forty five P S I plus friction loss just to get water to the top of that hill. And which almost mandates the necessity of a water tower or tank at the top of that hill. And all of that being put in first, and your indication was is the water system would follow the developments, almost like water system needs to be in place prior there too. Question to you.
Yeah, typically, water and sewer, you know, as parcels develop, water and sewer moves along. So you don't, you you won't see development at the top of the hill first. And so the city engineer has not done any modeling of this area. That's to be. I'm not sure how much modeling to get the water and sewer where it currently is. It's already been brought to this area. So they've done studies up until that point, but he has not modeled this whole two hundred acres yet.
Talking to realtors on the marketing lots and that up there, there is some concern that was brought up with the mining operation. I know there's a lot of dust that blows from their dirt they pushed up blasting their activities. And there's about what potential you'll end up there. And then the other concern, and the slow big hill and the topography of the land, the underlay. You start approaching your ground for a lot development, you start pushing housing into a very rarefied price point.
Yeah, and the idea of this plan is to have a mix of housing options. So it's not all hill. So different lot sizes, different price points. That's what the the plan is aiming for.
Are you envisioning? Are you envisioning?
That's way too early for a plan, uh, there's no projects proposed at this time.
It's, uh, they're gonna be up there, we're, we're probably talking four fifty to seven fifty.
I can't speculate on home prices at this point.
Just playing with rough numbers and costs and building that, so I was just curious. The, uh, you mentioned, you know, very modern low probability on a commercial and industrial. Being developed there, I hope that idea. You have moderate for industrial, week to mo- week to makes for commercial. Uh, you anticipate that being. In other words, can we, can we bank on your opinion, one way or the other?
I'll just clarify if I may, that's not our opinion, that was the opinion of Echo Northwest, they were a sub consultant to us. They produced a whole market study, so if you wanna dig deeper and get more information about what they were doing. Um, we, that's available, um, it's on the website, it's widely available. So, um, that is a resource to look at with some of those, with some of that information. You can look at their methodology and what their findings were and their, their opinions. Uh, but we've incorporated what they.
What they said.
Said, cuz we didn't wanna go into this blind and be like, well, I have no idea if it's good for commercial or what, yeah.
You know, it's gonna be terrible to, you know, to say, hey, we're gonna anticipate this happening and it not coming to pass. I would like this to be successful in all, all aspects, you know, like. The, uh, other one, um, the, uh, little, you know. I, 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 I just very mixed on, you know, the rental side of this, what kind of rental properties you anticipated being there. What you were thinking in your projections or your ideas.
We haven't done anything to consider rentals versus homeowners, no, it's just, it's, it's, we're in very high level right now. And so, and so what we're trying to do is set the stage for a different type of development to occur out there. You remember at the beginning, I said, a lot of this is mostly industrial and a little pocket and, and Emily showed the maps is commercial. That's what the comprehensive plan currently shows, so if someone wanted, if, if, and the landowner's DNR. But if they were to say turn over the property or decide themselves that they want to start leasing up the land and start making improvements. And do industrial development, that's what they're currently entitled for, that's what they're currently zoned for. So what I'm saying is, you live next door to industrial property right now. This is a different alternative. This is something different than what is currently already set out by the city through their comprehensive plan and their zoning map. We've been taught, we've learned from DNR that they're supportive of looking at some residential options out there. They own the majority of the land out there and they're likely going to offer it at some point for sale. But to, um, reiterate a couple of the important points that were made here tonight, the city does not own the land. The city's role is to provide the zoning and to direct development through this process. None of the people that are here tonight are too late to this. We've done some homework, we've done some, obviously, we've put a plan together that's for, up for discussion. It is not approved, we, you know, I'm glad they came tonight, I'm glad that they can look at the materials and the things that kind of. Um, we, you know, stair stepped up to this point, but we are not, um, to the finish point yet. So I, I just bring that all up to kind of give some reassurance of where we've been and where we're headed. Um, as to how any, um, development may occur, there's no, um. You know, a developer might come in and have like their prospectus, you know, this is what we plan to do. Or if it was a ma- master plan development by developer, you might get that type of information. Oh, we're targeting this kind of housing and this kind of thing. There's no one at the table with that yet, we're at the very early stages, we're trying to get the community involved. And the city through the process of working with the landowner to find out what's the best use out there. What does the community want and how can we get there? But then there's all these other forces, you know, the infrastructure and everything else that comes later. And city may or may not be the major player in that.
Unfortunately, developers vote with their wall up.
Well, of course, that's why we have certain things like.
I, I understand.
You have to do parks and things like that.
Oh, I do, uh, Valerie, um, can somebody let Valerie speak? Hello, Valerie? Okay, that's her hand. Valerie?
She's got it on mute.
Valerie, you need to take your, uh, mic off of, of, uh.
Can't hear you.
Uh, mute, unmuted. She can hear us, we can't hear her.
Are you sure? I hope she knows we can, we can see whatever.
Okay, this is Valerie, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Valerie Reed, I live at two, seven, three, one, one Pear Drive. I would rather write in a letter and can we extend this, um, public hearing?
Um, we will discuss that as an option, um, we have not came to that point and it's a discussion for the commissioners, but we will.
Yeah, I just got, uh, the letter taped to my door, saw it last night. So I am not prepared really to speak because I am, I'm pretty upset. I bought this house as a view estate and I certainly don't want multifamily homes down there. So I would just like to write in a letter if I could.
Uh, you're, yes, please, write a letter. And, um, I don't know if you just heard the, um, brief statement by Nicole Stickley. About, um, where we are and where we're going with this plan. Uh, we kind of seen you. Wander around or someplace trying to get, um.
Yeah, I actually had it on my phone first cuz I couldn't get Zoom on my computer, so kind of doing two things at once.
Okay, did you?
So.
Okay.
What, where do I get the email address to send my letter to?
Um, yeah, just send it to the city clerk, Carla, can you specify what that is for her?
Yeah, it's C Meyer, C M E Y E R. At C I dot Benton dash city dot W A dot U S.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So there's no more hands up back there. Anymore. Any others?
I'd like to speak, Jeannie.
Okay, Dawn. Okay, this Dawn Allen, he is a commissioner, we will let him speak.
Yeah, I, um, I understand that, uh, you know, this is a massive undertaking that. It's gonna be over there and it's gonna take years to, to, to make it happen, if it ever does happen. But the point is, is this, I'm thinking about from years past. Uh, when city, Benton City was developed, uh. Not a lot of planning was done then, they didn't have the tools to do it, they didn't have the, what we have today. And they had a lot of challenges and I imagine, uh, let's just put a street here, well, should we put a, a double lane road through? I mean, no, four lane through here, going through, well, they just didn't think of that stuff, uh, it, it was just nothing there. Uh, uh, when they went to put in lines and water and sewer and all that, it went all over the place. And probably not to code and probably not the way it should have been done, but it was still done. Now we have the opportunity as a city. To have something that's over there that we, as the people of Benton City, could be a part of and develop something right. And I think with whatever's there, uh, if we take a part in that. Uh, it's gonna bring huge dividends for everybody. So, uh, it's a massive thing, a massive thing over there with, uh, with the winery and the motels. And the restaurants and the, uh, the schools and the influx of people, but we're not there. And if we're gonna develop that and if we're going to do those things, uh, we need to get started. And think about doing that now, if that's gonna come to be and have a plan. And have it, implement that plan to make things happen. And if we don't do that, we'll end up like we, what we just now have in the city, which is probably not what we'd really like. So I hope and I, I wish that everybody would take a, take an interest in this. Uh, I went to the meetings like Michelle did and several, probably several of the others did, and it was very informative. I think there's a lot to be learned, there's a lot of changes that we can make. And it's an ongoing change from the beginning to the end. And I'm sure it's gonna change daily, uh, until we, but we gotta work out the bugs. Make it sure that it's done right, uh, and, uh, and make sure that we can prosper and go forward. And we have that opportunity now and I really hope that we take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Okay, are we done with this public hearing? I think she left it up, she's, she was done.
Say that again? You know, I think it's important for the public.
Okay, um, I see a.
Good reminder, this is not a quasi judicial public hearing, therefore you can have as many public hearings as you want. So don't be afraid of closing it and scheduling another.
We need more public meetings like we did the ones these people missed. Because, um, it's all speculation at this point and they really deserve to be a part of that. And, um, I really think it's important that we have more involvement with the community.
I think, um, at some point though, I need to close this public meeting and we need to have this conversation. These are our actions to take, they're separate from the public hearing, that's why I would like to close the hearing. If there are no more comments regarding the plan or if.
I was just gonna make one general statement, I just wanted to assure people. Um, we had, there's a Hayden development going up and there was a good number of people, if you remember. Um, that came for that and expressed because it was abutting their property. And we took that very to heart. Um, and when we proposed all of this stuff, the builder wasn't too thrilled with some of the stuff that they asked to do. But we put it in the plan and so if they wanted to build, they had to put fencing up, there was all these requests and stuff. And we honored those people there to do that and we're here to serve you. And so I just wanna reassure you that we're gonna do our best to do that. That's all I have to say.
Okay, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and now the commissioners can speak.
Excuse me, could you tell me what she said because I can't hear it?
Margaret can't hear what you said.
I've worked with them several times in the city of West Richmond in the planning commission and. They are upfront people, I will give them kudos for that.
Can you repeat who you worked for so that Margaret can hear that?
ABHL, Nicole, Emily, very good.
Thank you.
They, they won't do us wrong. Just to my neighbors, I was really happy to see they were the ones.
Yeah, you bet.
They do an excellent job.
Oh, you're great. Okay. Let's chat about this.
Well, I feel really bad about the fact that people weren't notified because that's really, really important. And, uh, we don't have anything to do with notifying you, for starters. We get our packets, we see the presentations and that's the only reason. That we know what the presentation was about is because it was delivered to us and we read it. And we listen to the public and we write stuff down and. Uh, the chair commissioner makes recommendations to the city council. On, on what was said. And I think that we really need more meetings about this and workshops.
I'm going to say, um, my name's Jeannie Wallace, I, we don't have pegs like. So my name's Jeannie Wallace, I'm the chair, I'm saying this because. Um, in case somebody wants to contact me or the mayor or somebody else about what I'm going to say. Because this is basically a very preliminary planning document. There is no. Right, nothing in this document is going to be implemented, I mean, uh, it physically implemented as. In regard to people going out and moving dirt in the field. I would say sooner than two years at the soonest, it's a living document. This type of, I think it's gonna be a very iterative process with that site over there. And I feel that it's to the point that it could be approved. For, uh, recommendation to move for the, to the council for their decision to approve it as it is. To give it incorporated into the comprehensive plan and we can start. Oh, I'll say it's beyond maintaining it because it will be really nurturing this aspect of. The comprehensive plan, um, that's the way I feel because annually we go into that comprehensive plan. And we tweak it, we do updates, so and then every ten years, there's a major revision to the, um. Men's C's comprehensive plan, which this will become a, a part of. And so there's going to be many more opportunities to get a swat at this pinata. And so I would feel comfortable making a recommendation. To forward it to council for approval and from that, please, others, tell me how you feel. Dawn? Anybody?
I'd like to, I recommend that it get sent to the city council.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay.
They will.
We will. And, and that's just it, it's still in the works, there is nothing final about this plan yet. And so, um, I appreciate your second, Dawn, but I think I. I don't think I made a motion, so I'm gonna make a formal motion that I make a motion that we forward. The I eighty-two South Sub Area Plan to the Benton City City Council. For, um, their consideration for incorporating into the comprehensive plan.
I'll second it.
Yay.
Yes.
Mom.
Could I hear who, who said yay and who said, said nay?
Uh, let's do a voice, a, a name roll call.
Please.
Can you please go through the names?
Commissioner Lynn?
Nay.
Commissioner Burton?
You said Lynn.
Yay, I guess, as long as it's for consideration.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Okay.
That being said, they can't really look at all the recommendations without it going to them.
Yeah, well, they're going to be looking at this plan a lot for the next twenty years. Okay, um, with that, I think I'm going to adjourn meeting except for I need a little help. I ain't got this piece of paper. I'm supposed to where this guy in over here and I'm not so sure it's supposed to be part of the meeting.
The hell's going on here?
Uh, Dawn, what has happened is we have a new member of the planning commission. And I've never signed an oath of office, but there is a form that I've been given. I guess to give to our new commissioner and your name was
Lynn.
Lynn Burton. And so I'm just going to hand it to him. I guess I'll let him sign it and do his thing and I'll consider this, this meeting adjourned at this point at seven fifty-one.
Thank you. Of some of the decision.
Wow.